How you doing? I didn't see you sneaky.
Very coming.
Good to see you.
We'll go.
Welcome, everyone, to North Ogden City Council. It's great to see you here this evening. We'll begin, first of all, be sure and mute your cell phones so that we don't have a disturbance during the meeting. Thank you for that, and we'll begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Council Member Turner.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening, the opportunity we have to come together as residents of North Ogden discuss the upcoming projects, and we pray, Father, that you'll bless us that we'll be able to understand the process and be able to help each other understand the needs and wants and desires of the residents here. We're so grateful for this community and for the kindness and friendships which we have here, and we pray thy Spirit of Civility will be here and that we'll be able to enjoy each other's time and the comments. We're grateful for all the blessings we have, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We please rise and repeat and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, discussion and our action to consider January 22nd, 2019 city council meeting minutes.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the council meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2019.
A motion has been made by Councilman Turner to approve the minutes of January 22nd, been seconded by Councilman Severing. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As we begin our session this evening, I would make these comments first. We have public comments for any items that you may have this evening. However, if they relate to the discussion we're going to have on the road widening, I would urge you to wait until the presentation is done, and then we'll give you time to ask questions or comments after that. That way, we may answer your questions ahead of time. So now, the meeting is open for public comment on other items?
Al Hollywood, I live at 2697 on Washington. Has anybody in the city ever considered a noise ordinance? I'm talking in particular about these cars with the blown-out exhausts that just wake everybody up, and they seem to be out between 10:00 and 2:00 in the morning, more so than any other time. And it's just way loud and way annoying.
Can you answer that one, John?
We do have some provisions related to noise, but they haven't, we haven't specifically done it related to vehicular traffic for mufflers. There are some state ordinances that cover that, but the city can increase those as well.
Okay. John, isn't our noise ordinance from like 10:00 a.m., 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. or something like that?
For certain things, there are, there are some things you're not allowed to ever do, but it's usually, I think it's 6:30 or 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Yeah.
Just saying. Everybody I've spoken with in the neighborhood that lives on Washington Boulevard wishes that noise would go away.
Okay, let's take a look.
For your time.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to our item two on the discussion of major projects. The presenter will be John Call, our city administrator attorney.
So, Council, this isn't a very long list, and not a lot's changed. Well, I guess actually a few things have changed since we last discussed this. The Monroe Boulevard purchases, the right-of-way, those have all been done, all the voluntary ones. If you remember, with the corridor preservation funds, unless there's a pending project in the next, I think, three to five years, you can't use eminent domain. And if you remember, this project was specifically designed to not require the purchase of homes. So it didn't relocate anybody or anything like that. Even the non-voluntary, the folks who didn't sell, their homes are not designed to be taken as part of this. So if that makes sense, the road's been designed to go through green or open areas throughout the city. The 3100 debris basin project, which is on what's commonly referred to as like canyon over on the Divide Road, that should start construction this week. We've gotten the final documents from the contractor, and we'll be issuing them a notice to proceed this week. And that, that project will take about four months to complete. Lauren Gardner, the city engineer, is spearheading kind of the oversight on that project, although most of the actual onsite work will be done by our contract engineer, which is CRS. Our public inspectors will also be up there verifying the way it's designed and things. The biggest issue that's going to be coming up is there will be a lot of vehicles coming off the hill. They're transporting most of that rock out of the city because there's not a lot of places in the city up on the hill to keep it, so it'll be a lot of diesels coming out of the city. And we have, in our RFP, we put a requirement that they work with the city on truck routes so it's not the same street getting abused every day. It'll be spread around as much as we can, so. Any questions about that one? This year, this spring, I believe we have another $500,000 of road maintenance projects. That's the resurfacing, the mill and fill, and things that we do periodically across the city. That's the type of stuff we do to help keep the roads in good shape and to increase it. In the past several years, this has been an emphasis of the city, and our roads have seen significant improvement since then, though not every road has been fixed in the past five years. We're seeing, we're seeing much less major failures on our roads, especially those that have been maintained, even though this is the time of year when potholes are a problem because there's been the freezing and the thawing, and the freezing and the thawing, and then the snow blade scraping the pieces out. So the Public Works guys have been out this past week filling those potholes with a cold mix, and then if they come out again, then we'll come back with a hot mix and have them fixed. So, just so you're aware of that.
So, John, on this one, is Public Works Dave going to give us a map of what streets they plan on doing? I mean, we have in the past, and so...
So, we can send you the map again. So the map that was approved during last budget is the one that would still apply, and this year, we'll come with a new map showing the areas that we'll be doing the next fiscal year. So, we typically do the fixing in the spring, and so that's, or the maintenance projects in the spring because it usually helps to get it after the cold seasons happened. So, but yeah, we'll have, we'll have a map. In fact, I think what we could probably do is put together a map that shows everything we've done since we kind of started emphasizing this program to show how much of the city's been resurfaced in the past five years.
Thank you.
So. On the culinary water storage, this is another project that the council approved this last year. Half of the expense, and then the other half will come in the coming year, assuming the budget is approved. But the idea is it'll be adding a million-gallon culinary water storage tank over in the 1050 East area on some property the city already has over there. And they'll be, it's actually designed to be in the park, but it is designed to be, to be done in a way that will actually have a small, like kiddie soccer field, you know, the soccer field for the youth ages, I guess the toddler, I don't know, the younger kids, the first age group, will play on top of the tank. So the, and that's allowed, there's nothing wrong with that as far as culinary standards because it's a sealed tank. There will be a building that's fully fenced, which is the access, but everything else will be essentially, it'll look like a grass field, but it will change the slope over there at Wadman Park a little in that area. And that will help with our circulation. Part of the issue we have with some of our springs and our wells that are up on that side of the city is when we have to turn them out because there's not enough, we don't have enough storage for them, so we can't capture everything we're entitled to, and so this will help with, help alleviate that problem. On the amphitheater, the Ramp Board has approved the $312,779 for the next phase, which is the interior buildout. The plan is to come back to the council, as discussed when this was originally approved in concept, to apply for the grant, to identify the specific areas the council wants to have us focus on for the construction, and then go out to bid for those items. And we're hoping that will happen here in the next month so we can get, see if there's a chance to get contractors in before the July 4 celebration to get some of the lighting and some of the plumbing done in the building, if those are the items that the council thinks would, you know, would like to put this towards. It is under the Ramp Grant slated for the interior of the building, and with this much, as well as what the city has to do in a match, we should be able to get a lot of the inside done and make it essentially rentable so that we could turn it over and let the public in without any risk of safety issues. Typically, when we rent public buildings like that, we require an employee to be onsite, so there would be that, but there wouldn't be a, you know, open. The biggest issue is there's some plumbing pipes coming out of the concrete over there that we've, you know, we don't want just anyone roaming around. So, there's that one. On the 2550 detention basin, this is the discussion that the council, the decision the council made a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago about separating those two to not do the water-based recreation facility. So there'll be the separate irrigation pond for Pine View and then a separate grass recreation area on the same parcel. We're working with Pine View on the details, and what I'm recommending is that we get, as we work on that final agreement, we have a member or two of the council and a couple members of the Pine View Board essentially be designated to work out the details of that contract, and then come back and present it to the council as a whole, just to, you know, make sure that both, that we have buy-off from both groups, since there was some confusion about what one group wanted and things like that. So, that'll, that'll be coming here in the next little while. They're finishing up the environmental study now that the recreation component has been more clearly defined, and we won't know for sure till the grant has been awarded until the NCRS gives us the heads-up or the nod, but they'll provide us with an official something here in the coming months. Just, they've been slowed down a little bit by the government shutdown there. They're one of those groups that didn't, didn't function during those, those days in the beginning of the year. The 400-450 East widening is what we're talking about tonight, so we'll, we'll let Matt give you the more details on that. The other stuff that's kind of out there in the, in the long term is things looking at possible police, redoing the police station, the possibility of finishing out the remaining acreage at the Barker Park north of the Hollow, other park rehab projects, and then other street widening projects. You know, there's several other street projects that are on the 20- and 50-year plan for the city, so we're just kind of, we don't have any new updates on those, but just want to make sure it's, it's talked about, that they are talked about, or they're on the master plan. So, any, any other major projects or things that you have questions about that aren't on this list?
Okay, thank you, John, for that update. Next item is the discussion on the 400-450 road design. John will introduce our guest, who's our city engineer, Matt Harbison. He'll be here to present the discussion. After he has presented the information that is, that he has prepared, we'll allow some questions and discussion items from public comments. There will be no decision this evening regarding this project. That'll happen probably the end of the month after we've had time to take a look at what is being discussed this evening. So, John?
So, Councilman Matt Hardvixen's here. He's been instrumental in the WFRC grant that we got, we were awarded several years ago for this project. As the mayor mentioned, the, this project is not, we don't need a final decision from the council tonight, but the, what we're kind of focusing on tonight, and Matt can explain this in better detail, is the various options we have, the negative impacts of all the various options, and then hopefully some direction the council would like us to explore in more detail so that when we come back next time, we can have a better example of an overlay with some cost estimates, you know, they'd be pretty preliminary, but that would also help us to compare with the funding we have available, what, you know, that we have enough money to do this project, and from all original indications we do, we just want to make sure that we're, that we, you know, don't go over budget by $3 million because we're putting in gold-plated sewer manholes or something like that. So, that, and just to give the council some comfort, especially as we go into the, into the budget year, you know, that the project is funded, that the money's there, and that it'll be within what we estimate project-wise. So, Matt's with Jones &amp; Associates, and they've been the city's outside contractual design engineer firm for quite a while. They know the system, city pretty well. We also have Dave Espinoza here with Public Works who can talk about plowing and other things, and Lauren Gardner, who's the in-house city engineer, who can provide some information about, you know, his experience and things, but I think Matt would probably agree that, feel free to interrupt and ask questions, you know, from the council's side as he's talking so that we can flesh the details out, and then when the, when the public has comments, it'll probably be, Matt will write down the question so he can respond to them at the end of the comment period to, to make sure that, you know, it's not a back-and-forth, but it's, you know, answering all the questions. So. I think that's it, Matt, so. Which picture do you want me to pull up?
Maybe just this first one with the aerial image on it.
Okay.
So let me just kind of explain where I feel the project is at at this point. We've had the funding, we've received the funding to do the project from federal sources as well as local sources such as for property acquisition, the WACOG funds from the county. And we started with 102-foot right-of-way width, which included two travel lanes each direction, a median left-hand turn lane, we call it a two-way left-hand turn lane so that you can pull out of traffic, get into the middle, two-way turn lane and pull, you know, so you can make a left-hand turn into a driveway or into a connecting roadway. We also included in that original plan bicycle lanes on both sides of the road and parking on both sides of the road. So you end up with five total lanes, two each direction, one in the middle, parking and bicycle lanes, and then just your standard curb gutter, park strip, and sidewalk. That adds up to 102-foot right-of-way. To minimize the impacts, we have been directed to move, widen the road on the east side from 2600 North to Alberta Drive, and then at Alberta Drive, the direction we've been given is to curve the road and go to the west, and that's beyond this phase of construction, right? We're only looking at 2600 North to Alberta Drive with this first phase. And so the impacts will be, for the most part, on the east side of the road. This figure shows that there are five homes and the Valley View Baptist Church that will have access problems with that 102-foot right-of-way. We've also recommended a cul-de-sac at 2700 North that ties in rather than making that a T-intersection, as you can see, Lowman View Drive across the street is offset.
John, does he have a laser pointer?
I was just getting it for him.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, and just so it's clear, council and audience, the, I think Matt's explaining this is the starting point where if we just had open space, 102 feet is the right way, but I think you're starting to talk about some of the issues that come in with doing 102-foot right-of-way, and maybe some reasons why we might want to look at a more narrow road to minimize impacts on these residents and businesses or other organizations.
So this road right here is 2700 North, and it tees in, and you can see there's kind of a, an offset problem. That creates turning movement issues. One recommendation that I would suggest is just creating a cul-de-sac down here at the end and not tying it in to 400 East. That will help eliminate some of the traffic movements there. Now Pleasant View Drive down here comes in. The long-range goal for Pleasant View Drive is to bring it up and tie it in because this intersection cannot be signalized, it's too close to Washington Boulevard. So the long-range plan is to have a traffic signal here at this intersection and to bring Pleasant View Drive up into here. But for now, we're talking about just leaving the full intersection at Pleasant View Drive. Eventually, that will have to change with the traffic volumes that will, that are projected. But I would, I mean, obviously, we'll still connect Pleasant View Drive and Lowman View Drive into 400 East, but I, yes.
Quick question. Where does UDOT end?
So UDOT will, yeah, UDOT will end their project at roughly 2650, which is Pleasant View Drive.
Right about there, okay. That's what I thought.
And so this is, yeah, that's the interface where our project, the local city project will pick up. There may, there, we might, we don't really know exactly because they haven't finished their design, and we're still looking at our preliminary design, so. But yeah, that's, that's a good question. And so the way I laid these sheets out, and I'm sorry if it's kind of hard to follow, but this is, this is heading north, right, up 400 East, and then you start back over here and you continue north, so Lowman View Drive comes in there, and then you'll see it coming in down here and continuing north. So, this, with the 102-foot right-of-way, you can see that the back of the sidewalk is right up against that parking lot at the Baptist Church, and vertically, there's several feet between the existing roadway elevation in that parking lot, that driveway goes up. And so if you put, if you put the sidewalk there, there's going to be a vertical wall right there, and so that limits access into that parking lot, right, because there's several feet of vertical difference between the roadway elevation and the parking lot. And that's one of the reasons why I would also recommend changing that access so that it comes off of 2700 North. As you continue then, there's, there's several homes here. When I put these boards up, some of the residents were looking at those. I just did a rough, a rough calculation as to the slopes of your driveways, and then I did another very rough calculation to show what the, what the new slope of their driveways would be if we have 102-foot right-of-way here. And there, some of these, these six homes are excessive. The James and Janine Shoe property, Anita Glenn, Sean and Cecilia Martinson, Donald Roberts, and Holly Haramoto Reeves. Those five residence, residential properties would have extremely difficult access. I don't, I don't know how we would do it. I think we would like to keep the slope of those driveways below, or somewhere around 20%. I don't know what Lauren would say, but there wasn't anything in your, that I could find in your ordinance that gave a maximum slope, but if we could keep them, you know, somewhere around 20% at the, at the high end, then I think, you know, that would be okay, and we would only want to do that for a short distance. And so, if you look, I've actually written what those slopes would be, and several of these are over 40, 50%, right? I mean, we're talking not drivable access, you know, into those homes. So that brought up some concerns, obviously, after I started looking that, looking at that in more detail. Some things I would like to propose is narrowing up that right-of-way so that we're not at 102 feet. To do that, we did talk about this early on in previous meetings, by, to narrow that up by eliminating the on-street parking on the west side and only having parking on the east side, and that would take out approximately six feet. So instead of being at 102-foot right-of-way, we could drop it down to 96. I looked at some...
How wide is it right now?
The right-of-way?
Right now?
It varies. You, I think at the bottom, well, down below Pleasant View Drive, it's 130-something, you know, it's, it's Washington Boulevard width. Up here, I want to say, it varies as you go up in different places, but I want to say it's around 70 feet. So, yeah, 100, if we could drop it from 102 to 96, that'll save some of the impacts to those, you know, accesses to get into those homes. I would actually like to drop it down even more than that if we can find a way. If we eliminated parking on both sides of the road, that's another option, so that you could take and go from 102 down to 90 feet if you just eliminated parking on both sides, right? There are some other things we could do, and I showed those on this board up here. These have not really been discussed in detail at all, yeah. But I thought I'd present them now. The city's been looking at the complete streets, and so what you're basically just aesthetic modifications to your roadway, so you have more landscaping, wider sidewalks, and that kind of thing. And so, that could help us if you wanted to, to eliminate the problems that we have with access into those five homes by putting in a median planter. And what that does is mean that we can narrow up that, instead of having a two-way left-hand turn lane all the way up the middle of the road, we would only have that left-hand turn at intersections, and then in between the, in between the blocks, we can narrow that up another four, four feet or so, and that saves us, so we can go below 90 feet even if we wanted, you know, to minimize the impacts to those homes. If, if we can't get access into those homes, then basically, I think, we have to buy them if they cannot access their, their driveways. So, I just wanted to bring that up and give you some time to think about, you know, the impacts of doing that. Now, the problem with putting in a median of sorts on that road is that you wouldn't be able to turn directly into your driveway, you'd have to go to the corner, make a U, if you needed to turn left into your driveway, right? You'd have to go to the corner and make a U-turn, and then, then you could turn into your driveways. But that would possibly save some of those homes, if, you know, as an option, so. There's also, let's see, can you go back maybe to the second aerial? You got that one?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm just, I mean, we'll have, there'll be a balance of what we can, what we want to do, you know, how many properties we have to purchase, and also the convenience, right, for people to get into their homes. So, right here, this is the intersection at Alberta Drive. We will complete, we're supposed to complete this intersection with this project, which means we'll have impacts here to all four property corner, all four properties on the corner here. The plan right now at 2850 North is to just pull the roadway to the north like this and try to line it up with Alberta. That will require this, I think it's the Paul Cruse, does that sound right, home, to be taken down or possibly relocated on the site. So, as, as an option, we could also put a cul-de-sac here rather than running that intersection skewed, you know, through the Cruse property. that intersection skewed, you know, through the Cruse property. But 2850 is just one of those roads that goes, is planned anyway, to go all the way up to Mountain Road. And so having a full intersection here does make some sense. But also, a cul-de-sac makes some sense, too, because of this skewed intersection. Now, this is another intersection that will eventually need to have a traffic signal. And so it'll be controlled by a light eventually. For now, we'll just be putting in conduits. We won't actually be putting in, it'll still have the stop signs, right, on the side streets, and it'll just be a through. But at some point in the future, we'll have a, a traffic signal there. And then one last thing I'd like to ask, if we can go back to the first one, I got out of order a little bit, I'm sorry. Right here, on, this is, that is a bicentennial park, is that what this is called here, right on Pleasant View Drive? And there's a little park that continues all the way down Pleasant View Drive on the north side of Lee's Marketplace? It, and it would be nice to plan, yeah, thanks, John, for bringing that up, Google Earth there, that image. It would be nice to plan a second access into Lee's Market off of Pleasant View Drive. Eventually, like I say, this will not, we won't, we can't have a signal here, trying to steady my laser. We can't have a signal here because it's too close to 2600. So if we could, and we have all those lanes here, you know, those five lanes. And as you know, traffic doesn't actually follow the striping there. People just make it into, into the marketplace through this access off of 400 East without following the, the traffic striping that's there on the roadway. And so I would like to just discuss maybe having a second access come in off of Pleasant View Drive into Lee's Marketplace. That would cause them to lose some parking stalls. And I know that they're, they're tied on parking as it is. But I think that for safety reasons, this access is very problematic and should be looked at. So, so basically, just to recap, I'd like the council to consider some options on a narrower roadway section. Consider either eliminating parking on both sides, and putting in a, a median planter strip if possible, so that we don't have to take all those homes. If, you know, it, if it's okay to, to leave a wider roadway and take the homes, then that's fine. Just, I just, we just need some direction so that we can start the process of, of figuring out what the impacts will actually be, and so that we can start the right-of-way acquisition as soon as possible. Were there any questions?
Matt?
Yes.
At one point, John, can you go back to that, the aerial that shows the 2600 intersection furthest down?
Oh, we don't, yeah, I don't show 2600 on this one.
That one right there.
Oh.
Do you want me to zoom in?
Yeah, if you would, please. At one point in the conversations that we've had over the several years with UDOT, it had been, it was my understanding that a raised median was going up north almost to 2650. That was part of the UDOT design on their intersection is that they were, in order to eliminate those left turns from going north into Lee's because of the amount of traffic, that there was a raised median going in there. Is that not true?
We don't know, until they-
Until they release-
Until they do their design.
I know that's been talked about by them a number of times.
They, they typically don't do raised medians as part of road widening projects anymore.
Okay.
If, they typically do the road widening, and then if it merits a raised median, they'll come in a couple of years after and do the median. So they usually do a little bit of study and stuff after that.
Okay.
There's 102-foot right-of-way. That causes a problem with power poles and everything else. It would have to be relocated, which would be pretty costly.
So, yes, the main, the main transmission line is on the west side. The, the, the existing right-of-way on the west side is behi, is about five feet, four and a half to five feet behind the back of curb. And that's, in that area, you'll see the power poles and the, and the transformers and, and power boxes, and even, I think, some of the, there might even be some signs from the businesses there that are in that area behind that curb, but inside of the right-of-way. And so the idea, yeah, over here is what we're talking about. The idea, then, would be to go all the way back that five feet, that's what this, that's what these drawings are showing, right? We start, we start at the right-of-way, and then do our standard roadway section, which is one foot to the sidewalk, and then from the sidewalk to the back of the curb is eight and a half feet. And so that would require the relocation of this curb further to the east, right? Because there's only five feet there now, remember? So we have to move that curb about three to four feet east. And then from there is where, you know, we start the, the parking or bike lanes and traffic lanes, and so.
We're not going underground with it.
So, the, yeah, that, that's a possibility. That would be, that, it wouldn't be paid for by this project. The city would have to come up with money to do that, on, on your own, to do that, or work something out with the power company, but, yeah.
Counsel, other questions? Hold your questions down here until we get done, and then we'll open it up for you guys.
Matt, on the 90-degree right-of-way section without, with no on-street parking, what's your sense of how many cyclists are actually using Washington, 450 East?
Zoom in on that one, if you would, John. I don't remember what that one looked like. Okay, so that one right there. So this one has the two-way left-hand turn lane in the middle, right? And then the two travel lanes. So we got the five full lanes on this 90-foot right-of-way section, and then, and then the bike lanes on both sides, but no parking, right?
Right.
And so, and your question is, what's my feeling for, about cyclists?
Yeah, how, how, how many cyclists are actually, I mean, if we eliminated it, and my cycling friends that are out there, just a thought.
So-
No hate mail. It's just a thought.
So, I, I don't mean to jump ahead of you, but part of the WFRC grant requires bicycle lanes.
Ex nay what I was going to say, then.
There is an option to do a, a dedicated lane on the east side for those headed uphill, and a shared lane on the west side coming downhill, since they could probably get to 25, 30 miles an hour fairly easy, or at least 20, so that they're not impeding traffic dramatically.
Or you'd only have one bike lane, basically.
Yeah, the other one would just be painted green as a shared lane.
So, and, yeah, and if we do that, I would actually recommend widening that a little bit. What they call it, a chero, you put in, it's a shared bicycle traffic lane. They can both be in the, in the same lane. It's nice if we can widen that a little bit, if you do the, the shared lane, just so that they can't pass each other without getting too far out of their own lane.
But that only saves us a foot or two.
Yeah.
And nothing significant from that 90-foot.
And keep in mind, you'll have mail trucks, garbage trucks going up and down the road. They'll need some room on the side of the road so they don't block traffic as they go from house to house. You know, if a delivery truck comes and parks to deliver a package, you know, it's nice to have some room on the side of the road. The bike lane kind of provides a little bit of that, so that it's not entirely blocking the travel lane. Also, you need to put garbage cans out, right? And so there should be some place there to, to put a garbage can and not block a travel lane, so.
And some of the other things, counsel, that have been thrown around by staff, and, you know, as we've talked about this, is the idea that in those, in the planter area, we pour a, a concrete pad for the trash to go on. So instead of it being in front of the curb, and thus closer to where there may or may not be parking stalls, but it's, it's actually behind the curb, and that just keeps the garbage trucks further off the road, as well as, you know, the trash cans out of the bike lanes as an option. You know, they, I think Matt mentioned it, but the other, there's also an idea that we just, we won't do sidewalk on the west side of the road at all. Just leave the west side exactly how it is, and put all the walking facilities on the east side of the road only. That helps with some, some, some things, you know. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we're hoping the council can kind of talk through and say, well, you know, I, I like this because it saves people's driveways and access points, but I don't like this because it, it, a good example is a median planter. You know, council members could say, well, if we put that in, it helps us with access for driveways steepness-wise, but it starts restricting left-hand turns into people's driveways, which is hard when, you know, when we're also throwing a wide road on top of them. So those are the type of things that the council, you know, again, after, I'm sure that the public will have lots of ideas on their own, too, to share with you, but to kind of help wade through so we can get to a, closer to a, a final drawing for the council's approval.
So, John, you'd mentioned if we don't put the sidewalk on, well, it's been kicked around, if we don't put the sidewalk on the west side, and Matt, you said that if we did do the sidewalk on the west side, that would move the curb and gutter out five feet approximately. So would we gain that street moving five feet farther to the west? If, if that would, you know, instead, you know, you, you understand my question, right?
I do. Yeah, leaving the curb where it's at would obviously save some impacts. Leaving the west curb-
Correct, yeah.
-where it's at would save some impacts to the east side. Definitely save some, because right now, we're planning on moving the curb east, that west curb. We're planning on moving it to the east.
And I'm not a huge fan of this, but has it been talked around about, like, you know, on 2600, on the north side, 2600, the sidewalks right against the curb and gutter, which I'm not necessarily a big fan of that. But has that been talked about, maybe doing that on the west side, and, and then, you know, then we don't have to move the curb?
So, yeah, that, that could be done. We like to have the, the park strip for snow storage.
Correct.
With this wide road, there's going to be, you know, a new-
And you have the problem with 2600 with the snow storage, too. I understand that.
Right. And then, then, of course, relocating the power poles. So as soon as we put the sidewalk in on the west side, then we're obviously relocating the, the power utility lines. On the east side, it's not so bad. These are just drop poles. These, these don't carry the main, the main transmission lines on the west, right? So on the east side, you just have the drops into the homes. Those can be moved a lot easier than the main, the main power line.
Other questions, counsel? Suggestions?
So, I just, the other question, we got five lanes. Is that because that's what is recommended by the traffic study we did? I mean, is there a way we, do we need five lanes? I understand that we're, we're growing and everything, but we had talked about 2600 needing five lanes, but it had been kicked around to where we just have the two lanes with the turning lane, and, and, you know, I mean, I, I'm just asking the question.
So, yeah, the, the four lanes are needed for traffic volume. The, the middle lane is needed for convenience, and it actually does add a little bit of volume, because if people want to turn left, they're not blocking traffic, right? And so the, the, the idea is to either put that, to that two-way left-hand turn lane in the middle of the road, or do the U-turns on the, at the corner, so that they are queued in, in a protected pocket, and not in the travel lane when they make that turn, right?
So, with that being said, is that all taken into account when, you know, Mountain Road's done, and Monroe, and all that stuff? Because some of that traffic's going to end up going that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would that, has that been taken into account? I'm just trying to think, is there a way, I would rather go 80-foot road, I mean, if we could or something, you know, that's, that would, I would love to be able to try to do, but I don't know if it's feasible.
So, one of the roads that you've probably driven on that doesn't have a middle lane, but it has two travel lanes, each direction is South Temple in Salt Lake. You know, as you're heading up from the city center up towards the U, if you're on that road, people will stop in front of you and turn left across the two lanes of traffic, and you kind of end up this, if you, if you want to get up fast, you end up zigzagging back and forth through traffic with people turning right and left out of those lanes. And so that's, but it, I mean, it, it works in Salt Lake. It's not ideal, but eliminating that middle lane, other cities have done it. It's not the recommended, safety-wise, or-
It lowers your traffic volume, is what it does. So if, if people are using the travel lane to turn, then it backs traffic up, right? And if, if you're making a left-hand turn across two lanes, it may take a while before you have an opening, right?
So in theory, if we did that, and we didn't move, and we, we kept the west where the curb and gutter's at, we eliminated the middle turn lane, what, what's the turn lane, 12 feet, 10 feet, what, what are they?
12.
12 feet. So you'd gain the five feet by leaving the curb and gutter, the 12-foot there, you're getting closer to an 85.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, just, those are obviously some things to consider, yeah. The, the narrower, the, the narrower that we can make the road, the less impact we'll have on those residents on the east side. And right now, I can, those five homes, I don't think are accessible with the 102-foot. Narrowing it down, I looked at a 92-foot, I think, also on a couple of them. And there was, they, they still were not even accessible with a 92-foot right-of-way.
But as far as accessible, then it turns into a, a 25% slope as opposed to a 50.
Right, yeah.
So it's, it's a better situation, but it's not ideal.
Ideal. Yeah, I guess that's, that's probably not a good way to say it. But yeah, it, once you get even down to a 90-foot right-of-way, you're going to have some slopes that are around 20%, you know, for the driveways. And, and that's getting to be pretty excessive, so.
To buy a motorcycle to jump into the driveway, yeah.
Matt, I remember in some of the early discussions, it, it's not just considering what's going on in North Ogden, but also in Pleasant View, up high on the hill, because a lot of that traffic will feed down Washington. It's not just North Ogden traffic that'll be coming down.
Yeah, we have the traffic projections. They're in the Transportation Master Plan. I forget what they are. I think south of 2600 North, it's 42,000 cars a day. That's a lot. And then north of 2600 North, I believe it dropped to like half of that, you know, maybe a little more than half, 24,000.
That's what you have on your-
From 2600 North to the north. And, and then the further north you go, then the traffic starts to drop even more, because they'll be turning off onto 3100 North, right? Turning off onto Alberta or wherever, and so. But yeah, with, with 24,000 cars through this area that we're talking about a day, that makes it, you know, really difficult to make a left-hand turn unless you're at a signal even, you know, a signalized intersection, so.
Counsel, this is the, this is the map from the traffic study by A-Trans, where they, they actually did a traffic count and things. I'm going to just zoom in. So like Matt said, it's 24,000 cars a day in the area we're talking about. When you get above 3100, it starts dropping down closer to 17,000.
Is that current? I mean, is that, how many cars do, do it daily, or is that what projected?
That's projected. Daily, right now, there's 14,000 vehicles in, in the area that we're talking about, the widening between Alberta and 2600.
Does that one show Monroe on there?
It does. It's, it's ghosted in over here. This 2700, the 14,000, and then the 12,000 is Monroe. It's kind of a dotted green line.
Other questions for Matt? If there are none, we would open it up for public comments. If you would like to comment or ask questions, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Turn those lights back on. Hi, counsel. My name is Dave Shoup. I live in Liberty, and, but I own Coldwater Animal Hospital. If you want to switch maps, maybe I can use a pointer. I don't know if this works or not. So just down from this building- So just down from this building is the business that I own, right there, Coldwater Animal Hospital. And so I understand the need for growth, uh, I don't oppose growth per se, but you put a center median right in there, if you can zoom in for me, the only access I have to my business is off of Washington Boulevard. And if you put a center median right there, then anybody that comes to my practice from the south has to go up, make a U-turn, come back down to turn into my parking lot. I'm not in favor of a center median. As power of attorney, if we can zoom up just a little bit, go up north, there we go, that's the Valley Baptist Church. My folks own this home and the one right above it, right there. So two of the five homes that you're talking about belong to my folks. Dad's had a stroke, he can't come, so I'm here to represent him. And my question, who pays or how do you determine the value of this property, um, that's here and/or is it just half the property? Because this property that my folks own goes all the way through to the street behind. So this whole rectangle of property and/or if the city purchases that, do they purchase everything or just half of it?
Those would probably be John's questions more than anything.
Yeah, and council, if you're okay, I think that we can write the answers, write the questions down and then respond, and let, but if you want, we can respond at the time to whatever you prefer.
I don't see any problem with responding now.
Yeah, I should respond.
Okay, so, so the, the way this typically happens is there's an, uh, an appraiser who specifically understands condemnation, who comes in and, and provides a before value of the property and then an after value, and then the city pays for the difference. Um, part of the reason for the, keeping the road narrow is if we don't get too close to the houses and we don't eliminate their access, then there's not as dramatic of an impact to the value because the home can stay and continue to being used as a residence or a rental or a business or whatever. So that's, that's the other kind of overarching theme with keeping the road narrow is you don't end up having to buy houses outright. Typically, if you, if you end up in a situation where, on a residential property where you're having to take the house down, you're required to buy the whole property unless the property owner prefers a different arrangement. So.
Okay, that answers my question, at least partially, and I'll have to confer with my folks on that, but, um, next question I had for you, if you are putting a sidewalk in, is that something that's funded by the, the city? Does the resident owner have to share responsibility in sidewalk or improvements? And what about sprinkler systems, all that that goes along with moving the road?
So the city would install the sidewalk as part of the project and relocate landscaping, including the sprinklers.
Okay. Um, next question, uh, I think we tried to answer this, so my understanding is the current right-of-way on this side of the street, on the west side is five feet beyond where the power poles are, is that correct?
Five feet from back at curb, right?
Five, and you're looking to purchase whatever it takes to, to widen your road in that direction. Um, so, I'm, I'm just new at this and so I don't know, uh, talk to me a little bit about eminent domain, if they come in and condemn the properties, is that value of that property therefore much less under eminent domain as opposed to what we could get value of the property for what it values currently?
I, I can only tell from experience we had when we bought several of the homes north of Alberta. So council, as soon as we identified we were widening this prod, this road all the way to 3100 and picked the alignment that Matt talked about earlier, as it moved to the west when it got above Alberta, those drawings showed us going through homes along that street, like actual through the wall of the home with the roadway. We were then required, um, or if someone could have come to the city and said, hey, you have to buy my home now, instead of that, we went to the owners and said, listen, if you want to sell, we'll buy. There was one property owner who was planning on listing their property for $215,000, um, and the appraisal ended up coming back in at 235. So my experience is the appraisers who do these for UDOT and condemnation projects typically are spot-on or sometimes have been even a little high, um, for residential properties. I, I don't have a lot of experience with commercial, um, and there, I think there is at least one commercial property that where the candy or the sweet shop is, um, where we, we, it'll be treated as a commercial acquisition, um, so I, I can't speak to that one, but that's not, I don't think what, what Dave's talking about, so.
We wouldn't use eminent domain.
Well, if at this point, we would need to use eminent domain if it wasn't voluntary, um, meaning if, if someone, if there was a disagreement on price, there, that can be worked out through the state of Utah Ombudsman's Office, because they, they can order a third appraisal that's done at the state's cost to, to verify the value, so it's a, it's another third person looking it over. Um, but if someone at this point wasn't willing to sell, then the city would probably need to look at eminent domain, um, because we can't hold up a, you know, an eight or a nine million dollar project over, you know, even if we're buying a whole house and it was, you know, $350,000, we'd probably still need to do eminent domain to, to make that happen. And if, if, if a house is taken, then the, then there's relocation expenses where the city pays for moving costs, um, if they can't get as good of a rate on their home as they, as they had, then we pay a, a point reduction on their mortgage. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things, um, that, that same house I mentioned earlier, they got about $20,000 of relocation expenses because we had to purchase the home for the project. So that, there's a lot of federal rules and stuff that have been put in place to help protect property owners as best they can.
All right, one final thing, if we go anything less than five lanes with the two up, two down and a center turning lane, aren't we just kicking the can down the road to, you know, let's say we put four lanes, no turning lane and traffic has to weave like you're talking about, that lasts for how long before the city comes back and says, dude, we gotta, we gotta go five lanes, we're going to take more? And so I think if you're going to do this, you ought to do it right the first time and not do it and then have to redo it later, is my, my comment there. Um, so if you're going to come in and, and do it, do it right so that you're not having to do it again. And I think that's most of my comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your comments.
And council, on that note, while, while we might be changing, uh, residents, uh, just so you know, this was, the city used to own 132 feet of right-of-way on this road and in the 50s, the, the city at the time gave back half the roadway to neighbors on both sides of the road, um, just as a heads up. And, but that, just so you know, that doesn't affect the current value of the property that's not taken into consideration in any way.
Phil, were you on the council back then?
Wow. I'm not that much older than you. Mayor might have been.
Uh, just a quick question, Wade Larson, I own the, uh, Ben Loman Dental, right on Loman View Drive and 450. It was discussed previously that Loman View Drive would need to be, uh, straightened out there right at the end of 450. Is that still under consideration? Cause I did not see that on the map now.
You want me to answer that, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's still under consideration, but it wasn't part of this project.
Okay, so if it happens, it would be as you maybe tie Loman View Dr, or excuse me, Alberta, or what was it? Pleasant View Drive up there.
Yeah, we don't know what that'll look like, we just have a concept for Pleasant View to tie into Loman View and then Loman View to tie into 400 East, but that wasn't part of this project.
Okay, so that's not, okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Al Hollywood again, 2697 on Washington. If we're talking two lanes on either side of a turning lane, we're talking about increased speed limits, a broken line, people passing, faster speeds, going up and down either side of the road? Is that anticipated? I, I don't think with two lanes in one direction, anybody's going to go 30 miles an hour, if you know what I mean.
Well, the speed limit in the city is 30 miles an hour. Attention.
If you want to sit in my driveway at any point during the day and look at people going 30 miles an hour, you're welcome to sit in my driveway.
Okay, chief, you can sit in the driveway.
This is Darrell Anderson, 420 East, 2850 North. You talked about a raised medium in the Washington Boulevard, and then there was this article in the Oregon Standard that said that the raised mediums would have flowers and trees. How's that going to correspond to what you're talking about on a raised medium, throughout from 1600 to 2100 and possibly up to 3100?
Will we address that back?
So that's UDOT roadway, I don't know.
So the, there's several things that are going on at the same time that seem related but aren't necessarily. The, the area that was in the newspaper was everything south of 2600, down through 1700 north. Um, but there is a discussion, as, as Matt's talked about with these median planters, um, nothing matched, drawn, has shown trees in that area. It would be a, it would be a landscape, but it wouldn't be a, a tree in that if I, unless the council said we have to have them, but the, the width we're talking about is probably not wide enough to sustain a tree for a long period of time.
Yeah, because Mr. Call, on the 17th of December in 2016, made a statement that that was a state and he could not affect the state, uh, owned property. So how would that correspond to what you're talking about from 1600 to 20, 2600?
So that would be, UDOT has a provision in their ordinance or in their rules that say if the city adopts a ti, a certain type of standard, UDOT has to respond to that. And so typically, if the city was to try and encourage median planters in that area of the city, uh, then UDOT would, would essentially talk to the city about it and they, they still have the ultimate right on whether it goes in or the ultimate say on whether it goes in or not. Um, but they have been more agreeable to those type of things in the recent history. Um, Ogden has several of those planters down on Washington, um, but that's, you know, it, it ends up being a negotiation between the city, but UDOT has the final say on it.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, can we get your address again?
420 East, 2850. Being impacted by the widening of this road.
Uh, my name's Vic Bachman, I live at 2828 North, 400 East, so right on the corner of 20, 2850 and 400. Uh, looks like my yard's going to be getting on both roads. Um, I see a lot of things that I would like to bring up, but, um, they're talking about putting a light right there. Um, every winter, every time it snows, there's tons of cars sliding down the road, getting in accidents there, not being able to go up because they're stopping, trying to turn onto Alberta Drive. I don't know how they would fix that with a light, it's going to make it even worse. I mean, every day I go out to go to work and I'm, you know, helping 10 people push their car around the corner, trying to get them going. So, I mean, I think you need to kind of look at that. Um, you know, out of all the property on this thing, I think my house could probably take a lot of the, you know, my house sits so far back that I'm going to be okay there. Um, but I was looking at maybe changing my driveway and not having it go out onto Washington, um, putting a garage back behind my house on 2850, um, and that might help, but if you put in a cul-de-sac there, that would kind of blow that for me on that, because that would be taking part of my property to put that cul-de-sac in, I believe, so. Um, you know, I, I look at this and, and then I also, where they're talking about not putting a middle lane in, they're taking these people's driveways, my friends next door, their driveway's going to be one of those that's really, really steep. And then if they don't have anywhere for their friends to park, I don't know if they're going to want people to park a couple of blocks away and then walk down to their houses to visit them. Um, you know, stuff like that, it, there's a lot of things to consider there. Also, there's a bus stop in my front yard, which if there's nowhere for that bus to stop, how's that going to work? You know, um, that's going to be blocking the road all the time. I see that down on Washington Boulevard now where they widen 12th Street, the bus stops in the middle of the road and, because they've got the bus stop and there's no, think, nothing on the side for it to pull over, so the cars are backed up clear across 12th Street trying to, you know, wait for the bus to move and then the light changes and then they're all still stuck in the middle of the road. So that's something we need to consider also with not having a parking lane on the side. Uh, the bike lanes kind of bother me. I, I've watched Alberta Drive all these years since they put that bike lane in there, I've seen one bike on that lane the entire time I've ever been in my house. Um, I, I don't know, I see people once in a while come by on their bikes along Washington. I see more kids on their skateboards going down Washington, I've, and then that kind of scares me thinking, you know, is this going to give them their own little lane to be on their skateboard going down Washington Boulevard, which is, you know, that's kind of scary already. Um, but, so there's, you know, a lot of concerns there, but, you know, I, hopefully that it'll all work out and I'm willing to work with you. But one of the biggest problems I've been having is for the last few years, you've been talking about this, I've never received a phone call from the city, I've never had a letter delivered to my house, um, I've never had any, anybody ever come and talk to me about this. Um, the reason why I know about this meeting is because the Andersons, um, talked to me at church and said, oh, we got this message on our door, so I started calling my other neighbors and Sean Martinson said, oh yeah, he got one. Um, my next door neighbor, the Reeves, said that they didn't get one and I've never had one and I'm like, I don't know why that nobody wants to come and, you know, where I'm being directly affected, I would think that it'd be nice to have somebody come and say, hey, this is what we want to do with your yard, let's talk to you about it, instead of just leaving me hanging, so, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
John, on those, on those notifications that went out, is that something that we can look into? It seems a lot that this next door neighbor would get a.
Yeah, we, we can find out, um, yeah, and I, I thought we had actually direct mailed, you know, to all the addresses, but that would have been two or three years ago and even though Mr. Bachman's lived there, you know, I, we can look and see why, why that didn't happen. I mean, obviously the reason we put flyers out was to try and get, you know, make sure that the neighbors knew what was going on, so we can, we can find out why that didn't happen.
I don't know if they don't want to come down my driveway or, you know, they're afraid because it's so long, but I've been ready to come down my doors.
Scary people live there.
Scary people live there. Okay, I'm Sean Martinson, uh, 2780 North, 400 East. Um, I'm one of the, uh, houses that you were talking about, Peggy and I have really steep driveways. Um, sir, do you know, do you have any idea what steepness my driveway is now? I'm probably the steepest one on Washington.
So what I look, and these are rough numbers, but 14% is what I.
Okay. So at 14%, let me just tell you right now, um, I have to shovel my driveway anytime there is any kind of snow accumulation whatsoever and I have to solve it because if I don't, I slide directly out into Washington and there's no way to stop my car. And I can't get up the driveway either because of, of how slick it gets, even with snow tires, it's still kind of a gamble trying to get up and down my driveway. Um, I've had people come over to my house and fall down and break, um, break their arms because the driveway's so steep. So if you're talking about going steeper on my driveway or on Peggy's driveway, this is going to be a real hazard for people coming in and out of that, plus the fact that you, you can't stop the cars and you get down to the bottom and it just slides right through, right into the street. And if you're talking about 24,000 cars going up and down Washington Boulevard, that's a, that's a significant challenge for those of us that live here. And then the other thing too, kind of looking at the map, if you guys do what you're talking about doing, you're going to basically put my front steps like not real far from the road itself. And so that's, that's also kind of a concern. And then the other thing too, it's been bad about, you know, that this won't affect our property values. I've been in real estate for 10 years, just living on Washington Boulevard as is right now, I take a $10,000 hit because of the busyness of the road. When we move this into like a five-lane road, we're talking about it, you know, between a 20 to $30,000 hit on my property value. So, you know, let's really think this through because it's going to really impact an awful lot of people and their ability to sell houses. You know, I've hacked, helped several people buy and sell houses on Washington Boulevard and that's always one of the major concerns. And that's one of the things that we use to talk sellers into price reductions, well, you're on a busy road. So, yeah. So, yeah, it's going to hurt us property owners directly, and the more property that's taken, the more it hurts us. But anyway, that's kind of my comment, you know. It really scares me when you start talking about a steeper impact on the driveway, because there's just not enough room to even kind of angle a driveway up and around or anything like that. You know, my side yard's not large enough to accommodate that, so, I don't know. It's something you guys need to think about.
Okay. Thank you for your suggestion.
Matt, on some of these driveways, you've got the steep portion and then it levels off, going back to the garage or the carport or whatever. Is it worth us, I think it would be worth us looking at, in those instances, if it means that we have a less steep driveway, that we pay to reorient the slope of that driveway further back onto the property? You understand what I'm saying? So we don't have a steep entrance and then a relatively level, that we take a longer piece and get a lower slope?
Yeah, we'll look at them individually and work with property owners, obviously, to make the driveway design work as best as possible. I tried, when I was doing these rough calculations, I tried to leave a car width in front of the driveway that was fairly level, you know, say, you know, somewhere less than 7% or something like that, or 8%. And then, and then you would, then the steep part of the driveway would be out at the road, right? So that they can, so they don't have to get out of a car that's on a, you know, 20% slope. And so, but if you look at the drawings, in several instances, the back of the sidewalk is only 20 to 25 feet from the home. And so by the time you put a level area, you know, something that's more level for the car, there isn't much left. And so those driveways get very, very steep. So narrowing up the road, I think, is crucial, and I hope that you consider that, you know, as we select a street section.
I'm at 2776, 400, right next door to Sean. And we've got like two big trees in our front yard and in that, so would you guys clean up all that as well, or is that, because the way you're talking about coming up on it, those trees are gone too. And then we've got a real steep drive there already, and there's no way to lower that slope the way it is, because my garage sits right there on that slope. And I've got horses in the back that, you know, I already can't get out with my trailers and stuff, because you drag the ground when you come out with the trailers and stuff as it is. And getting onto that street is already almost impossible, as it is. So I've got a lot of concerns with that.
So, counsel, for the first one, in the appraisal, they actually appraise trees, or they typically do, and pay for the loss of some of those trees, as well as take them down and, you know, dispose of them. And that's, I think that's exactly what Matt's talking about on the steepness. Some of that will help with this, the new road, because the crown might not be as steep or as heavy, so you don't bottom out in the gutter in the same way. But there's still some real concerns over the steepness of the driveway. And some of those might even, we might even work with the property owner on redesigning the driveway at the city's expense, so that it's a, they come in at a different angle. But the trade-off with that is sometimes that means you're starting on one end of the, like the north end of the property and moving to the south end, so you're crossing the front yard with the driveway, which is not always desirable either. So, there's a lot of very specific property owner things that need to be worked out as part of the acquisition package.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Did you talk about the anticipated start date?
We need them to come up to the...
Come up to Mike.
Oh.
You got a ballpark on when you plan on starting to do this?
So, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Well, but you know the answer to this one, so...
I guess it's spring of 2020, but...
A year from now.
Yeah.
I'm Belinda Adolphson. I live at 460 East, 3000 North, so I'm not affected by this phase. And I'm not sure, you haven't talked about it, going to stay that same width going all the way up or not. But my concern is looking at it from the winter, going north, if you don't have that left-hand turn lane and people are going to have to zig out and around, there's so many roads, so many accidents and people coming down. They have to build up speed to go up the hill in the winter, especially if it hasn't been plowed yet. I got at about, I was above 2850, about 29, I could see my garage. I couldn't make it up the hill about four winters ago, and I called non-emergent dispatch to have them come sand it. I could see in my rearview mirror, four trucks went across going west on 2700. She said they had a schedule they had to follow. My son had his truck running at the time. He said, "You want me to go home and get the truck and I'll pull you up the hill?" And I said, "Yes." I watched him come down, a van going up sideways, who couldn't make it up, he came down, hit that van 100 feet in front of me. I watched my son hit that car. If you don't have a left-hand turning lane in the winter, there's going to be a lot more accidents going up the hill. And the same thing in the summer, if you don't have that bike lane, yes, people should go 30, but really, they don't. And if they're having to share a lane, I'm concerned people are going to get hit, whether it's bicyclists or skateboarders.
Okay, thank you for your suggestions and comments.
Gary Stewart, I have three properties that are actually above where we're going to be doing this project. But the biggest concern I have right now is the speed of the dump trucks coming down, construction trucks, cars. Like this gentleman says, we have cars from 6:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the morning coming up there with those rice engines, motorcycles. We get woke up all night from these vehicles. The trucks start coming down in the morning with air brakes. These trucks are not going 30 miles an hour. I bet that some of them are going close to 45 miles an hour. We've had three, five vehicles total out into our property in the last five years. Every year during the winter, we had people driving into our property, hitting our trees, hitting the mailbox. It's a constant nightmare, because it doesn't get patrolled on a regular basis. Sometimes they come out once or twice a month and they give a few tickets, but that area up there is a nightmare with traffic coming down there out of control. It's, I know the city really can't do that much about it, but if we could patrol it more, or if we had some way to regulate the noise and the construction vehicles coming down there, because it's terrible. It's a wonder somebody hasn't got killed there. We've had deer hit out in front of our yard several times on there. Just the other, last week, there was a deer hit there, as it came across the pasture from Myers and it runs through the area, which is a neat thing to have wildlife there. But, I hate to bend your ear, but the traffic coming down there is only going to get worse with higher speeds unless we do something about it. And I do have one other question that maybe, we spend all this money on all these roads and to improve everything, but every time we have people turning into the businesses, we have all these panhandlers and beggars on every corner of our intersections down there. That's not the best thing, do you think? We should have some kind of control over intersections and roadways to keep people from begging for money and blocking the traffic. That's basically what I want to say.
Thank you for your comments, Gary.
John, can you address the panhandlers?
So, the state has been trying to tinker with the panhandling law to avoid those individuals who are impacting intersections and things. What they found is the cities that are the more aggressive are seeing what you might call professional litigants, who they make their living by suing cities on panhandling ordinances. And so, we've been kind of waiting to see how it settles out, because essentially, the, I think Ogden passed an ordinance, well, I know Sandy passed one that they just went on, but it was because people were panhandling in the median in the middle of the road. So they were, and they were able to tell people they couldn't stop there, but if the person moved to the outside corner of the street or the outside edge of the street where the sidewalk is, they were allowed to panhandle. So they, anyways, it's still in flex, it's a freedom of speech issue that keeps coming up tied into that. So it's kind of a complicated thing. We can, or private property owners can keep them off their property. The trouble is on Washington. It's UDOT-owned road and it's public property, for the most part.
Hi, I'm Judy Becky. I own Artistic Hair, 2600 North and 400 East. I don't know whether it's proper at this time or not. I've seen a lot of orange markers, and everybody's getting excited, wondering if something's going to happen, or if they're just markers. Could you maybe just explain what's going on there, and if it's going to happen a correction there, or to help the city traffic?
So, that intersection is going to be widened, so there's two travel lanes in every direction, as well as the capacity for two left-hand turn lanes. So essentially, it'll be, the capacity of that intersection will be dramatically improved or increased. And the markings are the surveyor, or the surveying company that UDOT has hired, because UDOT's doing that intersection, out marking where all the utilities are, where the existing curb and gutter are, and are all those things, so that when they do the design work, they know where everything is and they don't accidentally like that. So, that's what all the marking that's going on out there is.
Is there a date that they're going to start that construction, or is it just unplanned right now, exactly?
That one also will be the spring of 2020.
Okay.
Hi, I came up with one other comment. I am one of those cyclists. Again, I live in Liberty and I bike over the pass to work, to and from during the summer months when the road seems more passable and the light accommodates. And in coming down 400 or 450 East, there's no problem keeping up with the traffic, that's not a problem, other than people that park facing south along that road. If I'm coming down on my bike and someone's passing me at the same time, that gets very narrow. And so a bike lane would benefit me, but I hate to think that my bike lane takes Mr. Bachman's driveway out. So, you know, in weighing all considerations, I can be a considerate biker, if that's what it comes to. And I think that's what most people expect, is that those who are sharing the road do that, share the road. But it's been scary a time or two, just with the parking, and so if you don't allow for a parking lane there, how do you keep residents from parking on the road, or friends or relatives, neighbors that want to come visit?
Okay, that's something we'll have to consider.
Well, just, my question was, is there going to be a city ordinance that says you cannot park alongside the road?
We're not prepared to answer that at the present time, because we're just trying to figure out a design now, then go from there.
Very well, thanks.
Thank you. If you get hit, I know a good hospital close by.
That's not funny.
Mr. Anderson, again, one question I have in regard to this, no parking on the east or west side of Washington Boulevard, once this project is taken care of. Have you given consideration to people living on those houses on the east and west side when their families want to come visit and there's no room for them to park on their own private parking? The reason I bring this up is because, shoot, wanted to make a no parking between 400 East and 450 East on 2850 North, and he was going to make, because of safety hazards. And we were threatened a lawsuit and said, "No, you can't do that." That's something you might want to consider.
Okay.
I'm Becky Garrettson, and I'm actually, I came to represent Claudia Archibald. She lives about, just right below 3100. And she's interested to know when the upper section will be started. If, is there any...
Want to go, the road going north?
Uh huh.
Potential is 2020.
Well, I think, so...
No, you said that was from 2600 to 2850. But from 2850 to 3100, when, how, how long will that take to...
You got a crystal ball, I don't know that one.
So, so counsel, and there is a chance, and I'm, it's a very, very, very slim chance, but because of the way the funding's worked out, there is a chance that the estimates would come in great and we could go to 3100 next year. Most likely, that won't happen and it'll be put off for another, I would say, 10 years. You know, and we've met with Ms. Archibald, Mayor Taylor and I went out there, and she was one of those homes that she decided she'd rather stay where she was at for now.
She's 93 years old.
Yeah.
If she can stay until she passes away, that would be the biggest blessing.
And that's, and it, as the market turned and the property values went up and construction went up, we kind of realized we weren't going to get to 3100 with this first phase. And so, that was exactly what Mayor Taylor said, was, you know, Ms. Archibald's been here for 50 years, she should be able to stay where she's been gardening, and I think she's still gardening.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, she does.
So, you know, if you ever drive by in the summer, she's out in her backyard gardening and grows a big garden, not just a tiny one, a really big one.
She's a farmer from Idaho.
Yeah, so, most likely 10 years or more.
So she might, she'll be okay, she doesn't need to sell her home.
Right. And there again, counsel, the idea is because we know the road will require her to sell the home when she's ready, the city needs to buy it, so...
And she understands that.
Yeah, we let her know that...
Wait, she can keep her home, does she? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Randy Nguyen, 2412 Barker Parkway. I wanted to, out of courtesy, let these homeowners that are affected speak first, but as a citizen, I would just express that I agree with the points that we shouldn't put a median up there, and that also we should do the five lanes and leave a center lane. If we're going to do this right, we should do that when we do it, rather than, I agreed with the first gentleman who said, "Let's don't tear it up twice, let's do it right the first time." So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. You're lucky, I just about shut it down.
You should, you should have, maybe. I'm one of the guy in the limbo at 28, I'm Paul Cruse, 410 East, 2850 North. I'm a house that's right in jeopardy of that intersection there at Alberta Drive and 2850. Actually, first time I've ever heard you thought about doing a cul-de-sac, that actually sounds good to me. Make it easier for me to get out of my driveway. But I just, kind of these ideas we put out there, but I haven't really seen anything, nobody's come back and talked to me at all, period. You know, I had the one time with John Call, and the mayor came by once a few years ago and talked to me, and that's the last time I've had any communication with the city on any of this stuff. So, just kind of curious what was going on, what's your, some of the ideas you have, maybe before you do all this stuff, you might present, you know, some of the ideas you come up, might come to sit and talk to my wife and myself, kind of see what you're thinking. Because I'm the house that would be, have to be moved back or whatever's going to happen to it, to straighten that intersection out. I don't mind the idea of a cul-de-sac there, that would actually give me some less traffic getting out, a little more inconvenience to go around the corner, but it would certainly help a little bit. I always kind of wondered why we didn't do something more with mountain road, you know, some of those other mountain road, to get some of the traffic away from Washington Boulevard. We seem like we're trying to encourage traffic up the hill. We seem like we're trying to encourage traffic up the hill, but we don't seem like we encourage traffic on the other routes that are there available to us, which would help alleviate some of these problems we're concerned with here is how much traffic is going north. So I don't know why we don't look at some of those options there also about, I know it takes you.
You think their driveways are steep. You think their driveways are steep.
But, but just some of the ideas where we can kind of funnel out some of this traffic throughout the city so it wouldn't all be going that direction. And see, seems like everything we're funneling is up Washington Boulevard. We're not trying to get it spread out more in the city, which we should, probably should be doing. We kind of seem like we're heading in one direction up. So anyway, let me know when you hear something on what, I'm curious or whatever. Of course, I have horse and everything else, so I'm kind of a weird position there also with horse, what I have there too. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. See, no other comments, we'll move on with our agenda.
Mayor, just a quick question for Matt. Have they looked at or considered, and I'm not a huge fan of them either, but the approaches that are, the, the over the gutter approaches, have that been considered at all to alleviate some of that?
Yes, that can, just an inch or two higher than the curb. When you do those overpass type, you raise, you raise the, that about three inches above the back of the curb. So you pick up about three extra inches, right? And so the sidewalk, as you come to those, actually comes up, right? Through the, through the drive approaches. And that's something we can do. They're a little more difficult to plow and they often plug. You get debris that'll come down and get jammed underneath those overpass and, but you can do that. They're also a little more difficult for people to maneuver because if, if they cut in too closely, then they're going up over, you know, that overpass or the curb. And so they're a little harder for people to drive than just that standard cut open approach. But we can do that, obviously, as an, you know, as an option. What we've also been looking at doing, because every few inches makes a difference, right? For someone to get into the driveway. And so I do want to consider those overpass style drive approaches. Also changing the cross slope on Washington or on 400 East. So what we have out there, I think, is, is close to what they call a normal crown. So the center of the road is the highest. We can make the highest point further east, if that makes sense, on the roadway. And so that raises up the sidewalk and the curb on the east side. It doesn't gain us a lot, but it could gain us, you know, 10 inches or so, depending on where we crown that road. And so that's something else we'll probably end up doing to help lessen the impact, you know, of those driveway accesses.
And one thing we forgot to mention, counsel, is that there will be some storm drain improvements and other things going in as part of this project to, you know, capture or eliminate any additional capacity or, or water runoff, that type of stuff, those type of concerns.
So this was discussion, but Mayor, you'd mentioned that you wanted some direction to help with this. Do we, before we move on, do we want to discuss some of the direction we want to look at? Or do we, does Matt have enough information or what?
You mean further discussion for?
How, to narrow down the road or anything? If we come to a thought process there or does Matt have any idea what we're doing here?
Well, I don't think a decision was going to be made today, obviously.
So there, there's not, there's not going to be a design decision.
Correct.
But I think as far as what the final one's going to look like, but if the council universally is like, we, we just don't, we can't stomach the thought of a median, for example, or we really want sidewalk on both sides of the road. If, if the council has some consensus on some of those items, it'd be really helpful because then Matt can come back with three options instead of eight. And so anything that the council feels on those items, it'll, it'll be helpful because the more we can whittle it down, then we, we do need to make a decision soon. So if designed, so we get our design documents ready for bid in November, that's kind of the target bid timeline so we can bid at the same time UDOT does. That way a contractor could in theory be picked for both our projects. Not saying that would happen, but if it was the same contractor, it eliminates a lot of overlap and miscommunication on road restrictions, you know? It'll be easier to keep the intersection and the roadway open at the same time because it's the same contractor doing the work and they can plan with themselves as opposed to trying to talk to two different contractors. So, yeah.
John, can I ask a question before I make recommendation? Mr. Cruzay brought up a good point about Monroe and Mountain Road. When you look on that map, because we don't have that on our, on our packet information. So when you're heading up 450 and it's 24,000 cars, right? You can see that and then it turns left onto Alberta?
Yes.
Isn't that, is that 8,000?
Yes.
That would be, that would be part of the 24,000 vehicles, right?
Right.
Okay. So what would be the projection on Monroe? Is there, on that map, is there a projection?
Yeah, so the, the projection is showing 14,000 cars using Monroe. And so the way this map is designed is as we get growth across the city, this will be the capacity of all the roads on an average day. So on an average day, you'll see 24,000 cars on 400 East, 14,000 on Monroe, roughly 4,000 on 1050 East and roughly another 4,000 on Mountain Road. And so right now, in fact, let me just, I can find the, the existing numbers because it's in this same document up a few pages. Should be the next one. It's not the right one. Sorry, I should have had this ready for you. So this is the, this is the current situation. For example, 1050 is already about 4,000 cars. There's not expected to be a major growth. Down here on Mountain Road, there's only 1,600. So that's, that's projected to double and a little bit on top of that. Obviously, there's no vehicles on Monroe right now. So if, if, for example, Monroe wasn't constructed, then the, the vehicles that, that 14,000 vehicles traveling per day would move to Washington and to Fruitland, 1050 and Mountain Road. And so those roads would get expanded. So that's, that's the reason why the transportation master plan has been focused on the cit, by the city for so many years and even decades, is that it's a long-term, long-range, how's the system going to work in 20, 30, 50 years? Because you have to, you have to plan for it all or you'll end up with some choke points. So.
Thank you for clarity. Thank you for clarity. I, I guess maybe I'll be the first counsel.
I have a comment first.
Oh, well, please go right ahead, Cheryl.
I, just in my comments and thoughts, and maybe they'll go along with yours, but as a biker myself, and unfortunately, some bikers feel like they own the road and some cars feel like they own the road. And so some are, they're not always considerate of each other. So having been hit by a car on a bike, I, I can't, I don't think sharing a bike lane is the safest route to go. That's, and I've had some scary things too also. And as far as the medium, I just think that's a disaster waiting to happen. I mean, there's no way you want to go up and make a U-turn on all that traffic and come back into a driveway. So I don't see that as even a consideration. So that'll solve one problem. And also the bike lane. I mean, I think you have to have a bike lane somewhere because bikes are just going to get more traveled, the roads will get more traveled, especially where they're pushing alternative transportation. Those are my thoughts. Okay?
Excellent. Well, I just want to echo what Cheryl said. And first off, I just want to make it clear that we're so grateful for the citizens coming and making recommendations. I mean, we really do encourage and appreciate recommendations, but I find myself totally agreeing with Cheryl. If we're going to do this, we need to do it right the first time. And I am not in favor of the median. I think we need to mitigate as best we can, maximize the amount of ground or minimize the amount of ground that we take from the east side. But we have to have the bike lanes. I just can't see that west side trying to share. And so my, my recommendation would be the five lanes with the center turning lane with bike lanes.
What about parking?
There has to be.
I don't know if we're going to come to a, I don't know if we're going to come to a, a clean consensus on every issue, but if we're going to try to mitigate taking people's line, uh, ground, there might just have to be a give and take. I don't, I don't know on that. That's, that's hard. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Just for people that are curious, John, will you scroll up just a little bit? So Mountain Road, I don't know who's all familiar, no, the other direction. That blue line that's dotted is actually going out to the freeway. So we'll have another access out of our city and it's in the design phase right now going through the neighboring city Pleasant View. So the cities are working on multiple routes out of our city. So a lot of traffic that goes down Washington is going out to the freeway. Now there'll be a second route that will go out to the freeway, but that's not there yet.
I believe our projections, the projections though include that road going out. Is that right, John?
They probably do, but. Yeah. When you and I are deceased. No, it's going to be there within a couple of years. That's why we built a fire station up there.
I ask, how much wider is the road going to be? How many feet are you planning on taking from our yard?
You need to come up to my.
You need to use a microphone.
Can we finish with council discussion first?
These guys' driveways aren't even deep enough to park a car in unless you're in the garage. They got to have somewhere for people to park when they come to visit.
Yeah, that's been mentioned, so.
But, and I know, like my yard, I was kind of measuring it out and by the looks of that, there's going to be probably around 50 trees that are going to be cut out of my yard, which I have a lot of people tell me all the time how horrible that's going to be to lose all that because they like that, but I mean, that has to happen.
Yeah, can we hold the comments from the audience for a minute and then we finish here then? Thank you.
I agree with Blake and Cheryl. I'm wondering if on option number three, Matt, it's the 90-foot right of way. If we keep the bike lanes and we move the curb back, where's that pointer? If we keep the 90 feet all the way across here and we move this curb back here and we eliminate this so that we have, then that would, well, that's not the 90 feet, John. Can you, that's the 96 feet. Yeah, the one was. The one was no parking.
It's right here.
Oh, that one right there, yeah. So if we move this curb back here, that's four and a half feet. Does that provide some parking? Yeah, I mean, if we do that and bring the curb back right to sidewalk, we still have quite a separation between traffic and sidewalk. We have the bike lane, it's going to be 10 feet from sidewalk, edge of sidewalk or a little bit more, about 10 and a half feet, edge of sidewalk to the first travel lane. You have a bike lane and you have some room here for the, the garbage trucks, the, the mail trucks and even some parking perhaps. And we stay at that 90 feet.
So if, if you put a sidewalk next to the curb, then it needs to be a wider sidewalk rather than a four foot. So basically what you're asking, I think, is this, is the one above it. If you could, if you could move back up to that one. So we need the eight feet for parking and then you're saying eliminate the four and a half foot park strip, right? If we do that, then we need a six foot sidewalk. So we would essentially be taking two and a half feet out of the 96 foot right of way, I think, to do what you're talking about.
So we're still in the.
Well, you're at 93 and a half, right?
But in theory, Matt, and this, the council, you haven't weighed in on this, but if you eliminated the sidewalk on the west side, then you gained some of that back. Is that right, Matt?
Okay, yeah, so that's something that, that we've, that was mentioned. If you leave the curb where it's at on the west side, right? Is that what you're saying, John? Just leave the curb where it already is on the west side? Then, yeah, you pick up another four and a half to five feet. Just in, just by doing that, you could pick up another two and a half feet by doing what you're saying. So that'd give us, you know, seven feet roughly narrower than this 96 foot. So that'd put us down at about 89. Right now, I'm showing a foot on that particular one, the second one up there. I'm showing a foot behind, from back of walk to the property line. That's our city standard. You could take that down to a half a foot. What that does, it just gives us some room to take, to replace sidewalk without having to dig up somebody's yard, right? So you could gain another foot by doing that, so maybe eight feet. So that'd put us at 88 feet if we did something like that.
I'd sure like to see something along those lines, keep that center turning lane.
You're, you're gonna, it's going to be very difficult. It's going to be a very difficult design, no matter what we do, but the, the narrower that we can make that right of way, the easier it'll be to tie in those driveways and the fewer homes that we'll have to, to maybe purchase outright if necessary.
And counsel, one thing that we, we have talked about, just so you know, we have been looking at all options. These originally were designed as 12-foot lanes. You know, Matt's, Matt's gone down to 11 feet and there are some cities that, that do a 10-foot lane. The trouble we have with this road is because of the next 20 years are going to be, there'll be construction, you've got, you're going to have bigger vehicles using it on a regular basis and it's, I think Matt's recommendation at 11-foot lane is, is a safe and conservative approach, though it's not a UDOT 12-foot lane, right? So.
So Matt, if we were to say, just throwing out a number, that we'd like to see an 85-foot width, see what you can make work with that. Is that possible? If we said, you know, 88 feet?
Well, if we did the same on the other side and put a six, what, so the park strips are nice for snow storage.
Right.
And also utility. So you got power lines, right? So in, in some cases, you can put those power poles behind the sidewalk because usually there's an easement there to, to do that. Now, if, you know, if we eliminated the park strip on both sides, we would be approaching 85, but I don't think we could get to it. But we, we could get maybe, what do I have, I guess 85 and a half. We were at 88, another two and a half feet would put you at 85 and a half. But we're, now we're talking about relocating utilities into people's front yards, right? Rather than having it in a park strip.
The 90 feet makes it so that we don't have to worry about relocating utilities?
No, we'll have to relocate utilities anyway, but the power line, for example, is probably going to have to get relocated unless we leave the curb where it is and then wait to do sidewalk down the road on that west side. Because right now, the power lines are right behind the curb, but we have five feet to property line, right? And so that in, that, that area, that area between the curb and the property line would end up being the park strip area. And then the sidewalk would actually end up going on their property in sometime in the future if that's what happens.
The biggest thing is though, when we, whatever we decide works the best is we want to make it work for the build out and not have to redo it again.
So I just out of curiosity, Matt, what, what is your recommendation? I mean, knowing that we want to mitigate how much ground is being taken from the east side, what would be your best recommendation, taking into consideration, you know, a 30, you know, a 20, 30, 40-year projection?
Well, yeah, I think whatever you do should be the final design, right? Should be the, should handle the traffic volumes that we're talking about, that 24,000 plus vehicles through this area, right? And that was, that 24,000 projection was based on a five-lane facility, right? Two lanes each direction and a middle turn lane. So I, I think if you have that, then you can handle the traffic. Now, you have to weigh in, whatever. you have to weigh in, whatever's convenient for the property owners as well, whether it's parking and, and driveway access, you know, so. Where, where, you know, right now, we're, we're expecting to do all of the widening on the east side. But if we leave the curb where it is, then we'd have to do some of the widening on the west side at some point. That may not have to happen now. Uh, but, it just depends on how the residents, in my opinion, it depends on how the residents feel about it, so. What they're willing to give up, you know.
So, so I think what Matt's saying is, if the long-term projection is sidewalk on both sides of the street, then maybe, maybe we should just bite the bullet and move the curb, the, the west curb to the east and put the sidewalk in now. Because otherwise, you're going to eventually put the sidewalk into their front yards and, and essentially move the right-of-way that much closer to those homes. And so, or we could do that now. The trouble, the biggest trouble we have there is that there's a substantial expense for every single home you, you go and, and buy property from. 'Cause even if you buy an inch, there's a certain amount for appraisals and documenting and all that kinda stuff. It adds up pretty quick. So. So, I, I guess council is the way I see it. I think that the four things the council needs to focus on is the bike lanes, the median, sidewalks, and parking. And I think if, if we had that discussion, I, the impression I get is that the council wants it as narrow as we can to make it work. But, you know, Matt could possibly come back with several options that, you know, hey, this, this one doesn't quite get the parking that the council wanted, but you get everything else. Or this one gets all four of the things the council wanted, um, but it's this wide and, you know, that's the kind of, that's the kinda thing I think Matt needs to, to take us to that next step. And, and don't forget, you do have Dave with Public Works as well as, um, Lauren with his experience as an engineer as well. If you have other comments. I know, snow plowing with the median can be problematic, but also putting five, five lanes of snow onto a sidewalk is, is problematic as well, so.
Is there any way that we could find out what the volume of traffic is for, on, uh, um, Harrison from, I think it's Seventh Street North? They just did that and it's got, oh, I drive it every morning and it, honestly, it's a single lane heading north and south and then the turn lane. I hate it because I always seem to get behind the slow guy. Um, but, um, I, it'd be interesting to see what the va- volume of traffic is there, just i- i- if it's comparable to what, uh, they're projecting up in Washington. I'm just, just curious what there is. There's a lot of cars that go there. So, probably not twenty-four thousand, but I'd just be, and I don't know if there's any way we can find that out, John, or not.
We can, they did, because they'll have the numbers that they just did, um, unless Dave knows by chance.
I don't know the volume, but I know in their designs, does they have one lane like you're saying right now? They, they designed it so that all they have to do is change the strategy. Both ways with a median in the middle.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't have, wouldn't be wide enough for a median, would it?
Um, I think so. I think that was-
Really?
That was the, the plan for them to do that.
It would, it wouldn't be like a planter median. It would just be like they have down across from the Zion's Bank or whatever, right?
Yeah, it's a turn median.
Okay. It's just, I mean, 'cause they just barely did that and it's got bike lanes and, and all that stuff, so it's similar to what we're looking at here. Um, I think you guys know how I feel. I, I mean, I'd, um, I'd like to see the crown of the road moved to kinda, to look at that and, um, I want it as narrow as we can, you know, um.
Do you have enough information from the council, Matt, that you could, uh, design maybe three, three options for our next meeting?
Um, I guess all I really know is that we should design the five lanes and, and five travel, uh, the, four travel lanes, the median lane, and then the, uh, bike lanes, right? So, that puts us at-
And parking.
So, yeah, so we have that shown, right? The, parking on both sides or the one side?
That you need on both.
So, on both sides, then, if, it's, it's, you're back up to the hundred and two foot, yeah. So, if, if, yeah. Which just means those five homes, I don't think, can be accessed, so.
So, we already have that designed?
Yeah. Well, we don't, we have, we have it shown here and then I'm, on here, I just drew it out to see what the impact, 'cause uh, I don't have a clear, I, I don't have all the information, but I had enough to just kinda lay it out and see what the impacts would be and get, just to get a rough idea. And that's when I realized that those five homes are gonna be difficult to access. Yeah.
Mayor? Yes. I'm just thinking that because we haven't, uh, we haven't opened this up to public comments.
Yeah, we did.
Well, so we haven't had, uh, have we, we've had public comments on this?
Yeah. I can go back and tell you everybody the comment.
Okay. I was thinking we were having another one, just to get, uh, like, follow-up thoughts.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just, John, you mentioned the four things, the bike lane, then the, uh, the, when you said median, I'm thinking you were talking about the planter median.
Yeah, essentially, do you wanna, do you wanna turn lane or a planter?
Okay. So, my preference is, just for those four items, I think it'd be good for all of us to decide kind of an idea. I like the bike lane. I'd rather have a turn, where'd Matt go, a turn lane, than a planter median. I think that just is a nightmare. And I, I don't know what the point would be. I'd prefer sidewalks on both sides, but honestly, um, if it means that we can make those drives on the east side less steep and take less, I'd be okay with, uh, leaving the curb on the west side where it is and defer, kick the sidewalk down the road. Um, and I know that there are some who will disagree with me. Uh, and, uh, parking, you know, it, I came into this meeting thinking that we didn't need the parking. But then, as I've listened to residents talk and I think about that, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about, you know, a fam- a large family gathering or something like that, where there's nowhere to park. I think there needs to be some parking somehow. Um, so those would be the things that I would like to see in it. Just wave your magic wand and make it happen, all within eighty-two and a half feet. Right?
Wait just a minute, we'll give you a chance. Anything else, council?
Well, I, I agree with Phil with the exception, I, I mean, I know we're going eleven-foot lanes, but built roads, they'll hide ten-foot lanes before, so, you know, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to narrowing those up or even the turn lane, making it ten-foot and the other ones be ten and a half or something, you know, try to gain some inches there, you know, um, we can consider that. Just understand, I mean, I know John's saying there's gonna be bigger trucks and stuff, but eventually those bigger trucks will stop, you know, and so, you know, just a thought, so. Most parking stalls are only nine feet wide, to kinda give you an idea of, of the difference. And parking stalls nine foot wide and, you know, drive lanes on U-dot are twelve foot ro- wide, but if you go down, um, I don't know, one of the, one of our normal streets and, you know, they're, they're probably only ten-foot. You know, if you go on Twenty-Eight Fifty, it's probably only ten-foot wide. Like, drive lanes. I'm, you know, I'm guessing, just 'cause it's a narrower street a little bit, so. Are you lost yet, Matt? Are you?
Well, I mean, I, I think our, our intent was just to give you some options. The planter and the median was just one way to save four feet, right? It's 'cause it's narrower than the, the, um, and then, uh, you know, moving, eliminating the park strip, for example, that's, that's an idea, you know, you can consider. Um, just, I think our intent was just to have you know what some of these alternate concepts are and think about them and then, uh, we can come back and revisit it after you've had some more discussions with residents and some feedback from them, maybe. Uh, just to help you, you know, choose something that, that will work and, and still be able to get the traffic through there. And pedestrians and cyclists, obviously, too, so.
I'd still like to see what, if we could find out on Harrison, what's happening up there, John. I don't know if there's, if we could find that out, just curious.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get an answer on that.
I, I'd add that if any of your residents, if you take this, these drawings that are all available on the, uh, in the packet for today's meeting, and you doodle on it and you come up with a great idea, I'd love to see it. Seriously. I mean, you, you know, Vic, you're a smart guy.
He's a plumber.
But, uh, you know, a- anybody, you may look, sit down with this and, and you may think of something that we haven't. Um, or some way to, anyway, and you can doodle it up. It'd be great if you brought that to us and then we could run it by the engineers and see what we can do. It'd be great.
Lauren, do you have any comments on this that you'd like to add? Or any input? You're sitting back there. You might as well get, make yourself useful.
Sit in order, man, is that what you're trying to say?
A lot of the items that we've discussed tonight, uh, and the options, uh, Matt and John and Dave and I have brainstormed over a lot of these issues. I think it's a, a wise idea to shift that crown. That will give us quite a bit. There's, uh, different options with how we do the driveways, how we place the sidewalk that will benefit and help us to reduce some of that right-of-way. Um, one thing, these, uh, five lanes that we have are the ultimate uh, need for moving traffic. Uh, today, we may not need all those, but ultimately, we will need all that and we'll need that right-of-way to accomplish it. So, there could be some options that we obtain that right-of-way to do the whole thing. We put the curb, curb sidewalks, those things where they need to go, but maybe it's striped a little different on the interim. Uh, because the need isn't there quite yet for two lanes in each direction, but it will be before too long. So, those are some options. But I think we ought to uh, acquire sufficient right-of-way to handle the full plan, build those curbs so we're not having to move them again in the future, so. Those are just a couple of my thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Lauren. Dave, any comment regarding handling the?
No, I just echo what Dave said.
Okay. Anything else in the council? Okay, we're gonna move the other item and then we'll come back for some public comments after that. Discussion or action to consider in a local agreement with Weber County related to obligations required for a small MS4 general UPDES permit for stormwater management. Dave Espinoza will be our presenter, our Public Works Director.
Start with telling us what all the acronyms stand there.
Okay, yeah, I, good luck. Uh, so, this is just a cleanup. Um, it's actually a renewal and usually, we bring it to you um, every five years. That's when the MS4s do. Um, we do it as a collaboration with Weber County and all of the neighboring cities that we have. Um, the reason we're bringing it a little early is, um, that they just added an extra part into there, so. If you could go down a little bit, John. Um, I think it's number five, if I boo. Um, so, yeah, in your annual fees. So, right now, um, the city of North Ogden, so, for the ones that haven't ever been part or know what this, uh, coalition is, it's, it's a storm dra- or stormwater management group, uh, which is made up of Weber County and then all the cities inside of Weber County have a representative inside there. Um, there's actually even a couple of cities in Box Elder that feed into, you know, their storm drains feed into, um, parts of Weber County. Um, so, and what it is, is, you know, it's anything from working together to figure out how to take the stormwater off the mountainside and get it out to the, out to the Great Lakes or into Willard, um, into the canals. And so, it's just a, it's a collaborative group that we, we work together. We also do it to create that MS4 that, that I was speaking of. So, everybody is represented in this group. We have Casey that does all of our SWIP programs. Um, he's part of this group that represents North Ogden City. In the past, though, it's been, that's, that's all it's been. It's, everybody just has one person in it and there was nobody actually running this thing. It was, you know, we, we worked together, but there was nobody running the ship. And so, what we did is, um, they came together and said, hey, let's put somebody in charge of this thing so that, that we can go to somebody if we have any issues, um, if two cities need to work something out together, that, you know, that we have a mediator there, so. Um, right now, we've been paying about seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. That's, I mean, that's all we put into this, into this program. Just for some of the education stuff we do, um, flyers and those kinda things. And, so what they said is, a- and that was based off of population. And what, what it was is, you know, our population said, you know, this is how much money we need to pay into this, into this coalition group. You know, so Ogden paid a huge portion. Weber County paid a, you know, huge portion and then the little cities just paid little parts. But the problem was, is that some of these little cities were the ones using the coalition more than anybody because they had to lean on people like Casey that, you know, that we actually had a full-time person doing stormwater management and those kinda things. And so, what we did is, we just said, hey, let's, let's do a flat rate across all the cities so that, you know, we're all paying our part. Um, and let's have a manager that's involved in there. And so, that's, that's in this number five here, just to pay this administrator that will, um, will all vote on, on picking a person to put the, in this position. And it, and the new cost would go up to two thousand dollars. That'd be a flat rate. It doesn't matter when our, you know, our city gets bigger, we'll stay at that same rate, so. Um, that was the only real cleanup effort in this whole thing. So, if you have any other questions?
When's this due? When's the annual fee due?
So, um, so it'll be at the end of this year. So, it'll be, and it'll be on a fiscal year.
The end of June, the first of July, I mean. It'll be in the next budget meeting.
Yep.
Other questions for Dave?
Do we have an agreement number?
A six dash twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve agreement A six dash twenty nineteen, the interlocal agreement with Weber County as explained by Dave Espinoza, because I don't wanna say all that stuff.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Barker to approve agreement number A six dash twenty nineteen, which would be the interlocal agreement to handle stormwater with Weber County. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Stoker. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll begin the voting with Councilwoman Stoker.
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Councilman Severine?
Yes.
Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, if there's any other public comments that I'd like to come forward, uh, you're welcome to do so. Appreciate your participation this evening, your suggestions and your ideas. And we would entertain other suggestions and ideas as we go along. Uh, we wanna make this thing right and convenient for everyone. So, please don't hesitate to contact a member of the council or myself. We'll be glad to help out. So, thank you for your participation here this evening. We'll move to the next item, which is item six, uh, council, uh, Councilman Turner.
So, in answer, I believe, to Vic's question on how much room, how much property with, if I remember hearing Matt correctly, the current road is about seventy feet. And so, we would, if we go with the hundred and two, we'd be taking about thirty feet of, of property frontage, correct?
Depending on where you decide to put the curb, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that's-
Yeah, I mean, so that, that's kinda, I don't know if that answers your question a little bit, that's so, um, and that's all I got for a moment.
Okay.
I reserve the right, if I think of something.
Councilman Severine?
I can't think of anything right now, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Barker?
Nope.
Councilman Swanson?
Just to tag on what Carl just said, if we're able to do it at ninety feet, then that, and where the curb goes, we may end up having to take less than twenty feet.
Correct.
Depending on where the curb goes, yeah.
I thought you told him he was going to eighty-two feet.
Eighty-two and a half, we can't do eighty-two. But, uh, no, and, and just grateful to see everybody here tonight, it's wonderful to see you turn out and express your opinions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stoker?
Yeah, I expressed the same, too, and also, I feel the other person's, share your pain on ending with cars in your driveway every winter. I live on that corner of Mountain Road, and they hit it just right and too fast, they're in my front yard. In fact, I even had a tire on my front door one year, they hit it so hard, and off my rock, so, that's really interesting, huh? But thanks for coming, your input is appreciated and much needed, so, and thanks to staff and all your hard work.
Thank you. John?
Um, just one thing, uh, I don't know if you saw in the newspaper, but the, the Salt Lake City Council is getting some issues, uh, some fights with the mayor and the council over whispering during council meetings. So, just as a reminder, everything the council says should be into the microphones during a council meeting, um, and even, there's even some, some people who have gotten in trouble for texting during council meetings, so just be aware that when you're at the, when you're up here, you should be focused on the microphone, and that should be kind of your only way of communicating, um, as a council member, so, and not that there's a problem in this group, but it's, it's, some things were said that the microphone picked up that are causing some real stir down there in Salt Lake, so, yeah.
Couldn't have in a better place. And then?
Council, I wanted to let you know why, um, the salaries and benefits are not on tonight's meeting. As you know, I went to training in California, and when I got home, I was sick for two weeks, I got pneumonia, so I was not able to get everything ready. It was in more, it was more in-depth than I was proposing to do, but we needed it to be that way. So, anyway, we will have that on the nineteenth.
And real quick, Matt, you sent out a email, a, and I don't know if you got a response from everybody, I saw the email, but I didn't respond, about, we're couns, canceling next week, and we're having it on the nineteenth at three?
Yes, we were, we're canceling next week, um, the nineteenth, we've already had set as a special meeting, and we will have to notice that as a special meeting, but on the twentieth, the email I sent out, on the twentieth, is a joint session with city council and the planning commission to talk about the form-based code. You wanted more information, and streetscape and that with the planning commission, if you, from the last meeting, you had mentioned that you wanted that.
I'm okay with it, I don't know if I, I don't think I responded. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments? I didn't, I see, wait a minute, uh, still got staff here, anything from staff? Thank you for coming in and joining us this evening. Entertained a motion to adjourn? And boo by Councilman Swanson to adjourn?
Second.
And second by Councilman Turner? Any other question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.